I remember who I was. I was lost, I was blind, I was a runt of time. Sin separated, the bridge was far too wide. But from the far side of the chasm, you held me in your sights. You made away a great divide, left behind heaven's throne to build it here inside. And there, at the cross, you paid the debt I owed, broke my chains, freed my soul, and for the first time I had hope. Thank you, Jesus, for the blood of life. Thank you, Jesus, you have washed me white. Thank you, Jesus, you have saved my life, brought me from the darkness into glorious light. You took my place, laid inside my tomb of sin. You were buried for three days, and then you walked right out again. And now death has no sting, and life has no end. For we have been transformed by the blood of the Lamb. Thank you, Jesus, for the blood of life. Thank you, Jesus, you have washed me white. Thank you, Jesus, you have saved my life, brought me from the darkness into glorious light. There is nothing stronger than the wonder-working power of the blood. The blood. It makes the sons and daughters, we are ransom to our Father through the blood. The blood. There is nothing stronger than the wonder-working power of the blood. Then call its sons and daughters, we are ransom to our Father through the blood. The blood. Thank you, Jesus, for the blood of life. Thank you, Jesus, you have washed me white. Thank you, Jesus, you have saved my life. Me from the darkness into glorious light. Thank you, Jesus.
Greetings to all my brothers and sisters and friends, and praise to the Lord Jesus Christ for this wonderful opportunity on this Good Friday to fellowship with you and to meditate just on the Lord's goodness and also on some commonly asked questions with regards to Good Friday. And all glory to the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ to us. Made this opportunity available to us by giving us breath and life and everything else to be able to fellowship together. And thanks be to God, the Holy Spirit, who is here among us. And many thanks to brother Sheijh for making this platform available to us to fellowship together and also to spread the word of God. And may the Lord Jesus Christ bless you and sister Naya abundantly for your service, my dear brother. Yes, so it's Good Friday, and I thought it appropriate for us just to meditate on why it is Good Friday if in fact the Lord was crucified on Good Friday. And also some commonly asked questions with regards to Good Friday. So why is Good Friday, Good Friday? Good Friday is Good Friday because it is the day that the Lord redeemed us out of the hand of the enemy. So it is actually a very good day, and we read all about this in Psalm 107:1-2, where the word of God says, “Give thanks unto the Lord, for he is good, and his love endures forever.” So this, the redeemed of the Lord, should say, “Those whom he has redeemed out of the hand of the enemy.” So the Lord has redeemed us out of the hand of the enemy on Good Friday, and therefore we have to give thanks to him and be joyful about it. And then what comes to mind is why did the Lord have to redeem us out of the hand of the enemy? Solomon, in all his wisdom, gives us a guideline with regards to this, where he speaks by the power of God, the Holy Spirit, and writes that God created man to be immortal and to be a reflection of his eternity. Nevertheless, through envy of the devil, that is jealousy, death came into the world. And how exactly did this happen? Well, we read in the book of Genesis in the beginning that God created man in his image. And we read in Genesis 3:8 that it was God's custom to come and walk in the garden of Eden in the cool of the day, in the cool evening breezes, to talk with Adam and Eve and to have a friendship and a fellowship with them. And the devil became envious of this friendship and this fellowship and this intimacy that God had with man. And not only that, but also because man was the crown of God's creation. God had created him in his image, but God did not create the devil in his image. So the devil devised a wicked scheme on how he could, how we could break off this friendship, this fellowship between God and man. And what he did was, he came to man and he sowed doubt into man's mind to doubt the goodness of the word of God. We read in Genesis 3:1, he said to mankind, “Is it so that God said?” So he sowed doubt into mankind's mind, and then mankind began to doubt the goodness of the word of God. And we all know what happened after that. Mankind disobeyed God, and sin came into the world. The devil now infected mankind's blood with an evil disease called sin. And not only had he now destroyed the friendship between God and mankind, but he also now held the power of death over mankind and mankind's souls. So we see, my dear brothers and sisters and friends, that the devil was not in the business of diamonds or silver or gold, that he was in the business of something far more precious, something priceless. He was in the business of souls. However, however, because of God's great wisdom and because of his goodness and because mankind was God's big friend, because mankind is God's friend and God is mankind's big friend. God devised a very, very clever plan. He already had a clever plan in place in order to redeem mankind out of the hand of the enemy. And we read all about this in Genesis 3:21. We see that mankind had become aware of his shameful nakedness. Mankind had become aware that he had disobeyed God's word, and he became aware of his nudity. And when God called to him in the cool of the day in the garden, he tried to hide himself from mankind, because now there was enmity in the relationship, in the fellowship between God and man. And there was now a problem in their friendship. But God, through his great wisdom, already knew what the devil was up to, and he already had a plan in place. And the first thing that God did, we see in Genesis 3:21, he slayed innocent animal souls in order to make garments to cover mankind's shameful nudity, to cover mankind's shameful exposure to sin. And by doing that, God basically, it was a sign that God made to all of mankind in the future that whoever is willing to believe that he in the future was sent, his own innocent son, the spotless lamb of God, to come and shed his blood to make atonement for this sinful disease that had infiltrated mankind's blood through the deception of the devil. And then what comes to mind and what some people may ask is now, why did God have to specifically give his blood? Wasn't there some other way rather to do it? And the question is no, because we read in Matthew 19:16-17 that is the Lord Jesus Christ, and he asks the Lord Jesus Christ, “What good thing can he do to inherit everlasting life?” And the Lord Jesus Christ, the first thing he does is, he asks him, “Why do you ask me about what is good?” Because only one, meaning God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit, only one is good. So we see that only God is good, and only the blood of God was good enough, atonement for the sin of mankind, because we know that a positive cancels out a negative. The goodness of God cancels out the evil of the devil. The innocent blood of God cancels out the guilty blood of mankind. So that is the reason that only the blood of God was good enough to make atonement for mankind's sin. And then we also cannot help but wonder, but why did God have to become a man? And why did he have to specifically shed his blood? And the reason for that is because God had to come and face the problem. This problem, this disease of sin, had not happened in heaven or in some other distant galaxy or on some other distant planet. This disease of sin had infiltrated mankind's blood here on planet earth. So God had to come and face the problem in order to help his big friend, mankind. And we read in Hebrews 2:14 a little about this, where the word of God says, “Because the children,” meaning us, “are flesh and blood,” he, the Lord Jesus, had to share in their humanity in order to go through the process of death, in order to die, so that he could destroy him who held the power of death, namely the devil. So the Lord had to become human in order to go through the process of death so that he could destroy the devil who held the power of death. And that is also why the Lord had to shed his blood, because had the Lord not become a human, he could not shed his blood. And only by shedding his blood could he make atonement for the forgiveness of sins, because Hebrews 9:22 tells us that without the shedding of blood, there is no forgiveness for sins. And by becoming a human and shedding his blood, the Lord also was able to pour out his soul, because the soul lives in the blood. And we read about this in Lepiticus 17:11, that the soul lives in the blood. And Isaiah 53:12 tells us that he poured out his soul unto death. So by bleeding, the Lord was also able to pour out his soul unto death. And the reason for this is that things were happening in two different realities. Things were happening in the physical reality and things were also happening in the spiritual reality. In the physical reality, the Lord was paying for the wages of sin, which is death, by the way. He was paying for the wages of sin in his blood. The commodity with which he was paying was his precious blood. And we read about this in Romans 6:23, where the word of God says, “The wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is everlasting life through Christ Jesus our Lord.” So as the Lord was paying the wages of sin in the physical reality in his blood, he was also pouring out his soul, which was in his blood, and his immortal, all-powerful soul of light was absolutely destroying the works of the devil in the spiritual reality. We read about this in 1 John 3:8, where the word of God says, “For this reason the Son of God appeared,” in order to destroy the works of the devil. So the Son of God, who is the light of the world, appeared. Light appears. And as the Lord was pouring out his soul out of his blood, his soul, his all-powerful soul of light was shining and destroying the works of the devil of sin and sickness and disease and death. And in return, the Lord was offering us back immortality. He was offering us back forgiveness. He was offering us back healing. He was offering us back salvation. And we see an example of this in the ministry of the Lord Jesus Christ. I think in Luke chapter 8:46, we see that a certain lady was suffering from bleeding, and she'd been suffering for 12 years. And she said to herself, “If I can only touch, touch him, then I will be healed.” And she touched him, and she was instantly healed. And the word of God says, the Lord Jesus Christ said, “Who had touched me, because I felt that power had gone out of me?” So by pouring out his soul, the Lord was also releasing power out of him in order to destroy the works of God, because the soul of the Lord was pure light. And we read in John 1:5 that “The light shines in the darkness, but the darkness could not overpower it.” So that is, that is the reason why the Lord had to become a human and why he had to specifically shed his blood. And by shedding his blood, he was also able to pour out his soul. And this process already started in the garden of Gethsemane. We read in Matthew 26:38 that the Lord said to his disciples, “My soul is anxious unto death. Stay here and watch with me.” And then in Luke 22:44, it says that the Lord went to pray, and his soul was so anxious that he prayed more earnestly, and then he sweat, became giant, great droplets of blood, and fell to the ground. So this process of the Lord's suffering already started in the garden of Gethsemane, where the Lord was already shedding his blood to pay for our wages of sin, to pay the ransom for our wages of sin in his blood. But as he was pouring out his blood, he was also pouring out his immortal soul of light. And this soul of light of his was shining in the darkness, and the dark works of the devil could not overpower it. And the Lord had to go through such a lengthy suffering. It was over 20, it was, it was, it was a 24-hour period almost of constant suffering that the Lord was bleeding and shedding his blood for us. And it had to be such a lengthy process, because the Lord was paying for the sins of all mankind. He was paying for the sins of all mankind that had lived before him. He was paying for all the sins of mankind that had lived while he was, while he was living on the earth. And he was paying for the sins of all mankind that would live after him. And we read about this in Colossians 1:20, where the word of God says, “God was making reconciliation through the Lord Jesus for all things, all things in heaven and all things on the earth.” So the Lord was reconciling the sins of man through the Lord Jesus Christ, but not the sins of all mankind. And he was also reconciling through his holy soul all the dark works of the devil in order to offer us in return life and immortality again. So that is why the Lord went through such a lengthy suffering. And we just see through the suffering what a good friend the Lord Jesus Christ is to us, because while he was suffering, paying this tremendous price for our sins, he in return was offering us the gift of everlasting life and the gift of salvation. So that is how good a friend he is. He goes through such a suffering, and he gives goodness back to us. And we, we just see that the Lord really wanted to do absolutely everything possible in order to restore the friendship between God and man. And we see even in the beginning of the Lord's ministry, we see how we, how we made friends right from the start. He called Peter, and he called Andrew, and he called James and John, and he called Philip and Nathan. He called the disciples, he called friends. And he already showed in the beginning of his ministry, he showed, “Listen, I want to restore friendship. I'm a relationship God, and I want to restore relationship between, between God and man. So come, my friends, come, you know.” So the Lord is really a good friend. And when we meditate a little about the Lord's suffering, we see to what lengths he went in order to redeem us out of the hand of the enemy. As I mentioned, the Lord already started suffering in the garden of Gethsemane that night. And we read, it was night, it was not morning yet, because the word of God says in Matthew 26:31, the Lord Jesus says, “Tonight all of you will fall away on account of me, because it is written in Zechariah that I will strike the shepherd, and the flock will all scatter.” So the Lord's words were this very night. And it was night when they arrested the Lord, and he suffered right through the night. And I do not want to go into all the details, because it is quite a lengthy suffering and it is also an emotional, a very emotional experience. But I would like to mention some important, some important parts of the Lord's suffering. So we see he suffered under the high priests and the elders and the teachers of the law and the soldiers of the Pharisees and the soldiers of the high priest right through the night. And they constantly mocked him and insulted him. They blindfolded him and struck him through the face. So the Lord was constantly bleeding for us. And every drop of blood of his that was falling to the ground, he was paying our wages of sin. And he was also pouring out his soul, his immortal soul of light, his all-powerful soul of light. And he was destroying the works of the devil and in return offering us back healing and forgiveness and immortality and goodness, because he is a good God. And then we read that early in the morning, the high priest decided that the Lord was worthy of punishment by death, and they delivered him over to Pilate. Pilate then realized that the Lord was under Herod's jurisdiction because he was a Galilean. And he sent him over to Herod, who also happened to be in Jerusalem at that time. Herod and his soldiers put a robe on the Lord and also insulted and mocked him, then sent him back to Pilate. And Pilate then eventually had the Lord flogged and delivered him over to the soldiers to be crucified. And this is where I want to just focus a little on the Lord's suffering, because Isaiah 53:5 gets fulfilled here as well. Not only here, but here it also gets fulfilled, a part of it. So I just want to talk about, about what happened when Pilate. It was a severe flogging, and the Lord lost a lot of blood. So much so that people speculate, medical practitioners speculate that the Lord should technically have bled out already after the flogging and not have survived. But more importantly, after the soldiers had flogged him, they took the Lord into a place called the praetorium. The praetorium were the inner courts of Pilate's mansions. And there, the word of God says, “They gathered the whole regiment of soldiers, the whole band of soldiers around the Lord.” And in the movies, and when we reflect over Good Friday times on the Lord's suffering, you see but a few soldiers and flogging the Lord and handling the Lord. But a regiment, a band of soldiers, can be anything from 600 soldiers. And that, that is a very large number of soldiers. And they gathered the whole regiment in the praetorium around the Lord. They put a purple robe on the Lord, and they pierced a crown of thorns into the Lord's head, and they put a staff in his hand. And the word of God says, “They constantly paid homage to the Lord, insulting him and mocking, mocking him, and spitting on him. And they took the staff, which was in his hand, and they constantly struck him on the head, on the crown of thorns, which they had pierced into his head.” And here we realize what Isaiah 53:5 says. Isaiah 53:5 says, “He was pierced for our transgressions. They pierced that crown of thorns into his head. He was crushed for our iniquities.” They, 600 soldiers or more, we do not know exactly how many they were, were taking a staff and constantly striking the Lord on the head and crushing that crown of thorns into his head. He was crushed for our iniquities. The punishment that brought us peace was upon him, and by his wounds we are healed. So that was really a severe suffering. And we read in Matthew 27, I think it is verse 31, it says there that “When the soldiers finally grew tired,” over 600 soldiers, “they finally grew tired of hurting and insulting the Lord. When they had finally grown tired, those ruthless Roman soldiers, they led the Lord away, crucified the Lord.” I just wanted to reflect specifically on that, how many soldiers it was and how they that thorn of crowns, that crown of thorns into his skull. And that is why, for our iniquities amongst other, amongst other things. So they then led the Lord away to be crucified. And according to the Gospel of Mark, the Lord was crucified at 9:00 a.m. in the morning. And there the Lord hung for another six hours. And I think over, over 20 Old Testament prophecies were fulfilled surrounding the 24-hour periods that the Lord was suffering on the cross, or not suffering on the cross, but suffering. And we see that about 3:00 p.m., when the Lord had now hung on the cross for about six hours, the Lord now finally called out, “I thirst.” But the scripture says, “Now knowing that everything had been accomplished, he also said, ‘I thirst.’” So that, that is a scripture in John 19:28, which tells me pretty much that the Lord hung there by his own accord, because the word of God says that he knew now that everything had been accomplished. So just his love for you and me kept him there on that cross to go through that suffering. And when the Lord said, “I thirst,” he was quoting, I think, the seventh, the seventh quote of when he was hanging on the cross. He quoted about, he quoted about seven different scriptures as he was hanging. And that one was a confirmation of Psalm 22:15, where, where the Lord basically confirms that through David, he spoke and said, “My mouth is dried up like a potchet, and my tongue is clinging to the roof of my mouth.” So the Lord basically said that seventh and final statement, he made that seventh and final statement on the cross to confirm that it was him that David was speaking of in Psalm 22:15 through the power of the Holy Spirit. Yes, so that was a lengthy suffering of the Lord. And the word of God says, “He then cried out, ‘My Father, into your hands I commit my spirit.’” And once again, I think the amplified version tells us, “He voluntarily committed his spirit into the Father's hands. So it was his choice to do that.” So the Lord absolutely just hung there out of his love for you and me. And because he was God, he could go through such a tremendous and severe suffering. But he had to, because he took upon himself all the sins of all mankind that ever lived, that lived and that would live in the future. And he poured out his soul and took upon his soul all the darkness of all the ages that the devil had brought over mankind and that he will bring over mankind. all the darkness of all the ages that the devil had brought over mankind and that he will bring over mankind. But we know that the word of God says, the light shines in the darkness. Christ the light shined in the darkness and the darkness could not overpower it. So that is why the Lord suffered for such a long time for us. And in my own life, I can also testify about the goodness of the Lord, about the power of his blood, about the, the saving power of his blood and about the protection of his blood. Um, and I will just briefly give a, a personal little testimony on this Good Friday, if, if I may, about the goodness of the Lord and his blood protects and how his blood saves. And we read in Matthew eighteen, the Lord telling us about a man who has a hundred sheep. I think it's Matthew eighteen, verse twelve. The Lord says, what do you think? Um, if someone has a hundred sheep, does, and one of them wanders off, doesn't he leave the ninety-nine and go up on the high mountains? Go up on the high mountains and search for that lost sheep? And when he finds it, finds it, he puts it on his shoulders and brings it back with great joy. So I, I was, I was that lost sheep. And I was also on those high mountains, specifically, I think, the King James Version and the New King James Version says, he, he will leave the ninety-nine and go to the high mountains where that sheep is lost. And I was that lost sheep and I was on that, on those high mountains. At the time, I was, I had strayed away from the Lord and I was under the influence, I was under the influence of things. And I was on those higher mountains, I was in South Africa and I was running away from the police. I was running away from the flying squad who were chasing me. They were chasing me because they knew I was under the influence. And they knew I had illegal things in my car. And I did not want to be arrested. I did not want to go to jail. And I started to run away from them and I drove at high speeds with my car around very dangerous turns on great heights, great, great heights. And I knew it was fifty-fifty whether I was going to be able to make those turns and whether I was maybe not going to be able to get my turn. And I was going to crash off those tremendous high mountain heights and fall to my death down below. And I realized, I realized that this is the end. And I realized that I am not ready to meet God because I'm under the influence of wrong things. And I said, dear Lord Jesus Christ, protect me with your blood, spare my life. And the Lord heard me. He protected me. I was so, so close to rolling my car off those heights because I drove at tremendous speeds and I was under the influence. I didn't know what I was doing really. And the Lord heard me and he spared my life. And I drove away and the police never caught up to me. But more importantly, the great shepherd, the good shepherd, because he is good, the good shepherd left the ninety-nine and he came after me to find me and he spared my life. And when he took me home with great joy, the father, God the Father was also standing there. And he was standing with open arms. And he said, bring a new garment and put it on him and put a ring on his finger and put shoes on his feet. For this son of mine was lost, but he is now found. He was dead, but he is now alive. Because God the Son is good, that is why he's good, the good shepherd. And God the Father is good. And um, that is just a little personal testimony out of my own life of what the Lord did for me, about the goodness of the Lord and how his blood protected me, even though at that stage my life was not right with him and um, how his blood saved me. And I would just like to, to ask you today if, if you, maybe this message has touched you and you feel that the Spirit of the Lord Jesus Christ is speaking to you, that there might be things in your life as well that, that are not right, as there were in my life as well. Um, I would just like to encourage you today to shepherd, to come to the good shepherd. And to, all you need to do is you need to receive, you need to receive his friendship. And you need to believe in his name and what he has done for you on the cross. We read in, we read in John one, verse twelve, that to those who received him, to those who believed in his name, he gave the right to become children of God. So all that the Lord is asking after, after going through all of this for us, all he's asking us is just realize that there might be wrong things in your life. Come and confess them to me, receive my friendship and believe in what I did for you on the cross, how I paid in my blood for your sins. And then I will gladly call you a child of God. Because I am the good shepherd and I'm the lost sheep. And my father is also a very good father and he's waiting with open arms to receive you back. And out of the scriptures, we also see an example of this. The very first example that we see of this is actually also in Genesis with the very firstborns of Adam and Eve with Cain and Abel. We see in Genesis four, verse five to seven, we see that, that Abel believed God. He believed that when God slayed innocent animal souls in order to cover man's shameful nakedness, in order to show mankind, promise mankind that one day he will also send his son, his, his only begotten son, his innocent lamb of God, to come and make atonement for the sins of mankind with his blood. We read that Abel brought the firstborns of his livestock and offered them as a sacrifice to God, as a sign to heaven, to show God, yes, God, I believe you and I believe in your promise. And the word of God says, God looked with favor on, on Abel's sacrifice. But however Cain wanted to do things differently, he rather wanted to bring crops to offer to the Lord. And now we know that without the shedding of blood, there is no forgiveness for sins. So he did things his own way. And God said to him in Genesis four, he said to him, do the right thing and you will be accepted. So he basically said to him, bring a sacrifice of an innocent animal and show that you believe that I will also send my, my innocent lamb to come and die for the sins of the world and he will be accepted. Otherwise sin is crouching at your door and it's waiting to overtake you. But unfortunately, we read that Cain did not listen to God. Um, he was influenced once again by the devil. And once again, we see the devil's jealousy at work. When Cain became jealous and he became jealous of the fact that there was a good relationship between Abel and between God and that God looked with favor on Abel, but not on him. And the word of God says, he did a terrible thing. He killed his brother out of jealousy. And not only did he kill his brother, but when God asked him where his brother, he also did exactly what Adam and Eve did. He questioned God and he said, am I my brother's keeper? So the one thing that God asks us is not to question him, to question his word. Because God is a, and he does only what is good for us. God asks us just to believe and have faith in him because he does the best thing for us. And he wants to restore the relationship, the friendship with us because he is a good God. And if you feel that this message has touched you and you want to let go of certain things in your life that you feel are not right and you want to receive God's friendship and you want to believe on the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and what he did for you on the cross in his blood, then I would like to encourage you to pray a prayer with me and to receive this gift of salvation that, that the Lord freely offers you and to receive the friendship of the Lord Jesus Christ. So let's just pray a prayer together. And after that, if you believe this in your heart, you will be a child of God. Dear Lord Jesus Christ, just pray after me. Dear Lord Jesus Christ, I realize that I am a sinner. I realize, Lord, that you died for my sins on the cross of Calvary. And Lord, I receive your friendship. Lord, I believe in your name and I ask you to forgive my sins with your precious blood and to come live inside of me. I gladly receive your gift of salvation and I thank you for it. Thank you, Lord. Amen. Yes, so if you've prayed that prayer with me and you've meant it in your heart, God has received your friendship and has forgiven your sins and he now also calls you a child of God. And we read that the word of God says in John sixteen that if you, if you obey the words of the Lord Jesus Christ and if you love the Lord Jesus Christ, you will obey his words. And God, his father, will also love you and the two of them will come and make dwelling inside of you. So now the Lord will come and live inside of you and all you do is you walk in your friendship with the Lord. You read the word of God, you study and meditate the word of God and you pray. You have an active prayer life with the Lord Jesus Christ. You pray to him and you ask him to, to give you the gift of the Holy Spirit, to fill you with his Holy Spirit. And he will do, gladly do that for you because he is a good God. So I thank you for meditating with me on this Good Friday, just on the goodness of the Lord Jesus Christ and for your time in listening to me and what, what I had on my heart to share with you and to fellowship with you. I pray that the Lord bless you abundantly. And just know this, that the Lord is a good God and that he loves you and that he is also returning. And the Lord testified to by his resurrection. So on Sunday, we will speak a little about the resurrection of the Lord and what significance that holds in for us and also for the future. So God bless you and we'll see you again.